Session. The session number 30 of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament, Second Regular Session of the II BTA Parliament is now called to order. May we request MP Sheikh Abdul Karim Miswari to lead the invocation. Please stand and continue with the National Anthem in the Bangsa Moro.
(speaking Bangsa) "Wakala rabbukum adhouni astajib lakum. M'ag'udu billahimin al-shaytani al-rajin. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alamin. Arrahmanirrahim. Maliki yomi deen. Iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nastain. Ihdina al-siraat al-mustaqim. Siraatalladzina an'amta alaihim. Gairi al-maghdubi alaihim walab'alim amin. Allahumma rabbana, wafqna bima tuhib wa tarba ya rabb al-'alamin. Allahumma yasr amura'na al-haq ya rabb al-'alamin. Allahumma arin al-haq haqah wa arzuqna atibah. Wa arin al-ba'tila ba'tira'na wa arzuqna j'tinabah. Allahumma ya rabbana wafqna bima tuhib wa tarba. Wassalla allahu ala sayyidina muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahbihi ajma'in. Walhamdulillahi rabbil 'alamin."
Mangaka babayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magiliw, helas ang sirohanan. Alam ng puso sa nitikoy buhay. Lupang hihirang, huwag ka nang mahiting. Sa manlurupi, ikapasisinil. Sa nadataputong sa sibuyat, sa labiqong pagkao. Ayunatang tulagawis sa kantayang minamahal. Ang isatanggawat kawat huwetan, unpaitan atininig. Ang pituinat karonya kayda, pamaynibatininig. Luwag napalo ng kwarhatik pa'sinka, huwengamit sa bibiko. Amin migaya ng patay magabi, ang mamaytay ng dahil sa loo. Simula on hanggang ngayon, isang naging layon. Magka-isaan pang gulon, karitingan ay patuto. Ngayon tayo mula sa hamon ng daktar, diyaku sa paganib na buhanlang. Ginagaku sa puso at paliniwala, ang ihawo para sa kabataan. Bangsa Moro ay tagunpay, buwanan pawis suwot buhay. Napayapan, katagukan, ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papalay Bangsa Moro. Bangsa Moro, Bangsa Moro, lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin, mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami sa loo'y magpatay, mananati sa puso pisipan. Hangga'pung mapiling daan ang may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay tagunpay, buwanan pawis suwot buhay. Napayapan, katagukan, ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papalay Bangsa Moro.
The Secretary General is directed to call the role to determine the presence of Koro. A call of the Honorable Members of the BTA Parliament: Abbas Ahmad, Abbas Harum, Abbas Basit, Abu Mujib, Alania Lysa, Alaudin Mostel, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lalang Jr., Ali Eric, Ambulutu Soharto, Amin Auden Abdullahjiz, Ang Patuan Baintan, Anaytin Susana, Antao Muhammad Kelly, Alagou Mary Ann, Asnawi Dan, Babaw Ali Montaha, Balindong Pamalian, Basman An La Tarhata, Candau Bay Maleha.
Present. Present, po.
Dilanggalan Hasidi, Gumamaa Gasya Ilaiha, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Soharto, Estimo Matarol, Gayak Abdawah, Yera Edward, Ajab Dawah Khalid, Hasim Abdawah, Hassan Hatimil, Itbal Mohager, Ismail Rasool, Yajuri Raisa, Yakilan Muslimin, Jakiri Al Bakil, Kahalan Den Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Loong Benjamin, Loong Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makapalar Abdawah, Makasalong Magdiani, Magatanong Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawal Bailey, Mastura Erock, Matalan Japar Apollo Mikael, Mawal Al Milbahar, Mendoza Proilin, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Norreda, Mitmog Russell Jr., Munius Jose, Orangun Suwib, Pakasam Obaida, Pak Abdul Wahab, Pangandaman Nabila Margarita, Parkasio Randolph, Piang Ramon Senior, Ramos Jamila, Salindab Said, Salik Ali, Sangki Ali, Seema Om Maria Sen, Seema Romeo, Sheikh Said, Silungan Aida, Simalinding Cadil Jr., Tulaiman Ali, Tago Pysalin.
Present, present, present.
Usman Azbar, Uthu Basir.
Ilaiha Bin Asaikh. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, with forty-three members of the parliament physically responded to the call and six responded via Zoom, we therefore have a total of forty-nine members of the parliament present in today's session. Mr. Speaker, we certify the presence of Koro.
With the certification of the Secretary General of the presence of forty-three members of the parliament, the Chair declares the III Parliament to transact its business. Laram, Al Bakil Jakiri.
Ala etina matana.
Karyaw ni Pavico.
III Parliament Bill Number 198 entitled an act granting cash incentives to Bangsa Moro top-notchers of bar and board examinations and winners of international sports skills and academic competitions appropriating funds therefore. Authors, Members of the Parliament: Hasime Dilanggalan, Mary Ann Arnado, Soharto Ismail and Michael Mitimbang. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament: Alil Bahar Mawalil, Hamid Malik, Nabiltan, John Anthony Lim, Sylphy Fahani Uyoyod, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Hatimil Hassan, Rasool Ismail, Tawakal Mitimbang, Basir Uthu, Mujib Abu, Suwib Oranon, Khalid Hajab Dawah, Abdullahjiza Minaudin and Al Bakil Jakiri. BTA Parliament Bill Number 199 entitled an act establishing a framework for the promotions and recognition of the Bangsa Moro brand appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Author, Member of the Parliament: Alil Bahar Mawalil. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament: Lysa Adamiya, Baintan Ang Batuan, Rasool Mitmog Jr., Don Mustafa Luong, Soharto Ang Bulutu and Rasool Ismail. BTA Parliament Bill Number 200 entitled an act recognizing and providing incentives to athletes from the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Indanaw appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Author, Member of the Parliament: Alil Bahar Mawalil. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament: Lysa Adamiya, Baintan Ang Batuan, Rasool Mitmog Jr., Don Mustafa Luong, Soharto Ang Bulutu and Rasool Ismail.
Mr. Speaker, all of these proposed bills are private member bills. So we invite members of the parliament who wish to co-author to please fill in the forms that have been provided to you and then submit to the secretary at Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for proposed resolutions, Mr. Speaker. We start with proposed resolution number 154. May we ask the Secretary General to please read the title and the authors.
The Secretary General is directed to re-propose resolution number 154 including the authors and co-authors. Proposed Resolution Number 154 entitled resolution urging the Bangsa Moro government to establish a wind power farm project. Authors, Members of the Parliament: Abdullah Gayam, Eddie Ali and Romeo Seema.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number 154 to the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Energy.
The proposed... There is a move to refer proposed resolution number 154 to the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Energy. It is duly seconded. There being no objection, the same is approved.
Next is proposed resolution number 254. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title, the authors and the co-authors.
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number 254 entitled resolution strongly urging the Ministry of Transportation, Communication, MOTC, Bangsa Moro Board of Investments, BBOI and the Ministry of Trade, Investment and Tourism, NPIT, address the challenges of traveling to and from Sulu due to limited number of passenger seating vessels and to add another route from Sambuangga to Luok, Sulu and vice versa to improve sea connectivity of the island province of Sulu. Authors, Members of the Parliament: Don Mustafa Luong, Abdul Karim Miswari, Norreda Miswari, Alil Bahar Mawalil, Azbar Usman, Hamid Malik, Benjamin Luong, Randolph Parkasio and Al Bakil Jakiri. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament: Lysa Adamiya, Baintan Ang Batuan, Rasool Mitmog Jr., Soharto Ang Bulutu, Rasool Ismail, John Anthony Lim, Japar Apollo Mikael Matalan, Michael Mitimbang, Mujib Abu, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Romeo Seema, Suwib Oranon, Bay Maleha Candau, Abdullahjiza Minaudin, Mosber Alaudin, Den Martin Kahalan, Tarhata Maglangit and Jamila Ramos.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer proposed resolution number 254 to the Committee on Transportation and Communications.
There is a move to refer proposed resolution number 254 to the Committee on Transportation and Communication.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker.
Deputy Speaker Nabiltan is recognized.
I associate myself as co-author with the resolution, with the solution number 254.
The Secretary is directed to include the Deputy Speaker, MP Nabiltan to be...
Thank you, thank you.
There is a move to refer proposed resolution number 254 to the Committee on Transportation and Communication. There being no objection, the same is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number 272. May we request the Secretary General to please read the author, title, the author and co-authors.
The Secretary General is so directed. Proposed Resolution Number 272 entitled a resolution recognizing and congratulating Bangsa Moro students who graduated recently from the renowned Al Azhar University in Cairo, Egypt, Canadian University in Dubai and Ainu Shiang University in Cairo, Egypt. Author, Member of the Parliament: Abdul Karim Miswari. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament: Randolph Parkasio, Den Martin Kahalan, Norreda Miswari, Tarhata Maglangit, Hamid Malik, Abdullahjiza Minaudin, Tawakal Mitimbang, Ali Sangki, Ali Salik, Hasime Dilanggalan, Susana Anaytin, Ahmad Abbas, Ali Montaha Babaw, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Ibrahim Ali, Hatimil Hassan, Eddie Ali and Said Sheikh.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat proposed resolution number 272 as a simple resolution.
There is a move to treat proposed resolution number 272 as a simple resolution there. Deputy Speaker. As the deputy speaker.
Ah, yes, yes. Just a... Ah, ah... Yung whispering lang ng Ain Sam. Walang hindi Ain o. Ain, A-I-N. Pakkatapos yung Sams, may S after N. Ain Sams University in Cairo, Egypt. Thank you.
Yes, duly noted, Deputy Speaker. We can resolve that during the period of amendment. There is a move to treat simple resolution number 272 as a simple resolution. There being no objection, this motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the main principal author of proposed resolution 272, Deputy Speaker Abdul Karim Miswari.
The gentleman from Sulu, Deputy Speaker Abdul Karim Miswari is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alamin. Wassalatu wassalamu ala ashrafimursalin sayyidina muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahbihi ajma'in. Rabb israhi l'sadri wa yasr la'mri. Wahlul uddatan mil lisan yafqah qawli. Summa amma bad. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Ah, isang hait ng mahal natin propeta Muhammad SAW. Siya'in nagsabi, talabul a'ilmi faridatun ala kulli muslimin wa muslima. Seeking knowledge sa Islam, sabi ng mahal natin na propeta Muhammad SAW is an obligation sa bawat na muslim, lalaki man siya at babae. At ang mga ulama, manarat, sabi ng ah, isang athar, dalawang bahagi ng umma ng propeta Muhammad SAW ida salaha, salahat il-umma. Ibig sabihin, yung dalawang kind of people sa Nation, sa Islam, kapag sila ay matuwid, matuwid ang buong umma ng Islam. Yung taeifah, taeifatul umara at taeifatul ulama. Yung mga leaders at yung mga ulama. At sa isang tafsir ng mga ulama ng tafsir sa wilayah tulam, isa sa mga wulatul umor ay ang mga ulama. At mga mahal kong kapatid sa Islam, ang pinaglaban ng Bangsa Moro mula sa day one, yung dumating ang mananakop dito sa bansa natin sa panahon ng castila, ang isang drive ng mga ninuno natin is to defend the religion. It's to defend the land at to defend yung bangsa ko natin. Lahat na yun, malaki ang participation ng mga ulama. Sa guidance, sa atin. Without the proper guidance from the people of knowledge, medyo ang tao sa tagal ng pananahon, baka makapunta na sila sa hindi tamang landa. makapunta na sila sa hindi tamang landas. At tayo sa Bangsa Moro, maraming mga estudyante po natin nag-aral sa labas. Pero, it seems, napansin po natin is yung recognition po natin sa mga talabatul ilm at mga ulama kulang. Yung participation ng ulama natin dito sa lives ng Bangsa Moro, medyo nakikita natin kulang ang participation nila ngayon. That's why nakikita natin ang kaugalian ng bansa natin, yung kultura natin, medyo sometimes magulat ka, sabi mo, muslim ba yan o hindi? Bakit? Dahil yung role ng mga ulama, medyo tinago na lang natin sa ceremonial, sa masjid. Gusto natin ang alim, magsabi na lang ng mga bagay yung gusto natin. Pero ayaw natin yung alim, yung magsabi ng katotohanan. That's why naririnig po natin, always na emblem nila, when it, kung may mga issue like terrorism, always ang nilalagay nila dyan eh, yung mga sabi niya mga religious people. Eh, sa katotohanan, the more you are religious, the more you are known, ano, maalamin sa reliyon, mas malayo ka sa mga ganyan na gawain. Now that's, that's why it's about time, bigyan po natin ng recognition ang mga ulama natin at yung mga talabatul ilm. Although yung ah, ah, sa harap ko ito, last year pa'to ito, mga graduates ng last year, at alhamdulillah, ang saya ng mga estudyant natin doon sa Cairo, yung nalaman nila, i-recognize sila po ng Bangsa Moro government. Ang saya-saya nila, ganun, pagkatapos nakagawa po tayo doon sa kanan ng konting celebration. So this year, ah, nag, ano sa atin, yung mga students sa ibang mga universities, sabi nga parang, ang rin-recognize niyo lang yung sa Al Azhar. Bakit kayo kami dito sa Medina o sa Jamia Atul Imam? Bakit hindi kami na-recognize? Actually, i-recognize natin sila lahat, 'yan ang nais ko upang. Kasi ang target natin sa Bangsa Moro, lahat ng Bangsa Moro ma-feel nila, they have a Bangsa Moro government. Hanggang dito na lang, subhanakallah bihamdik, asha do'Allah ilaa ilaa anta sakiroka, quatu gu'ilay. Isa pala, kung pwedeng mahingi, ang author dito is tayo lahat na namumuno sa Bangsa Moro, jazakumullah.
Agree, agree. Yes.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize Deputy Speaker Hatimil Hassan?
MP Deputy Speaker Hatimil Hassan is recognized.
Sorry, Madam Ayer. Ah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Al Azhar University should be recognized and commended for educating most of our leaders. The leaders of the Bangsa Moro people, Atamata of Akar, the late Ustad Salamat Hashim, the former Chair of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, graduated from Al Azhar University with a degree of Usulutin and Master Degree, with Master Degree. Ustad Abdul Bakal Ubakar, another leader of the Moro National Liberation Front, graduated also from Al Azhar University with a degree on Islamic History and with Doctorate in Islamic History and Master of Education from Ain Sams University in Cairo. The late Ustad Omar Pasigran also graduated from Al Azhar University. The late Ustad Ibrahim Kambo, known as Abu Halil Yahya, was also graduated from Al Azhar University. And our colleague in the Bangsa Moro Foundation Authority, Ustad Duli Ahmad, Abdullah Gayak is another graduate from the renowned Islamic History from Al Azhar University. Al Azhar University, ah, siya ang pinagotan na university sa mundo because it's already more than one thousand years on Al Azhar University. It was founded during the Fatimid reign. Ang Fatimid po, ay, kabag anak, rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, kalim sa Fatima, um, now found ng ah, Al Azhar University. So, I support the resolution to give due recognition pa mga estudyante naggraduate, ng Bangsa Moro students naggraduate galing sa Al Azhar University at sa mga leaders natin na naggraduate galing sa Al Azhar, at Al Azhar University. Ah, so with that, maraming salamat, wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Mister Speaker, there being no, ah, Member of the Parliament who wishes to interpolate, I move, I would like to make an omnibus motion to dispense with the periods of interpolation and debate and period of amendment.
There is an omnibus motion to disperse in the period of amendment, there being no objection, it is duly seconded, this motion is approved.
With the manifestation of the author to include all members of the parliament who are present as principal, as co-authors Mister Speaker, I move to approve proposed resolution number two seventy two, subject to style.
There is a move to approve proposed resolution number two seventy two, subject, duly seconded, this is approved.
Mister Speaker, next is proposed resolution number three four one. May I also request that this be read together with proposed resolution number three five eight, Mister Speaker?
The Secretary General is directed to repropose resolution number three five, three four one and three five eight.
Proposed Resolution Number Three Four One entitled, A Resolution Commanding the Appointments of Former Defense Officer in Charge of, in Charge Carlito Galvez Junior and Former Officer in Charge Isidro Purisima to Key Positions in the Office of the Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconciliation and Unity OPAP PRO. Authors, Members of the Parliament, Amil Bahar Mawalil and Rasool Mitmug Junior. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Lysa Adamiya, Baintan Ang Batuan, Soharto Ang Buluto, Don Mustafa Luong and Rasul Ismail. Proposed Resolution Number Three Five Eight entitled, A Resolution Extending Gratitude and Appreciation to President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior for Reappointing Carlito Guanseng Galvez Junior as Chief of the Office of the Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconciliation and Unity OPAP PRO and further commending Secretary Galvez for his continuing commitment in the Bangsa Moro peace process. Author, Member of the Parliament, Susana Anayatin.
Mister Speaker, I move to treat both proposed resolutions numbers three four one and three five eight as simple resolutions, Mister Speaker?
There is a move to treat number three five eight and three four one as simple resolutions, there is duly seconded, there being no opposition or objection, the same is approved.
I move to consolidate proposed resolution numbers three four one and three five eight, Mister Speaker?
There is a consolidate those two proposed resolution, there being no objection, this motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize principal author of proposed resolution number three four one, Member of the Parliament, Amil Bahar Mawalil.
Deputy Mawal, gentleman from Kawitao is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Just as not to prolong the deliberation Mister Speaker, ah, this resolution is just an expression of our commendation to the reappointment of both gentlemen who exhibited stellar performance in their duties. Ah, Secretary Purisima is OIC Secretary of the Office of the Presidential as Advisor on the Peace Process and Unification and also the previous stint of ah, the Honorable Secretary Carlito Galvez as the OIC Defense Secretary. So I move Mister Chair that we approve and I also join my colleague MP Susana Anayatin in her resolution, ah, thanking the President His Excellency Ferdinand Marcos Junior for reappointing these two personalities. Thank you Mister Speaker.
Thank you. Next Mister Speaker, may we recognize MP Susana Anayatin to speak a few words about proposed resolution number three five eight.
The lady MP from Cotabato City and Datupiang MP Susana Anayatin is recognized.
Thank you Mister Speaker, Datupiang since what also? Good afternoon everyone, assalamualaikum. Mister Speaker, public office is a public trust. This is a constitutional clause that holds a public office and its officers accountable for the sound performance of their official functions while being conscientious of their decision-making roles. In this regard, the Chief Executive of the Republic of the Philippines as the head of the state of the government who is vested with authority to appoint vital cabinet and other higher ranking positions must exercise such power with reasonable discreteness, prudence and profound diligence. Mister Speaker, the aforementioned facts proposed to the appointment of Mister Carlito G. Galvez as the Chief of the OPAP PRO is an indicator of his excellence in public service while at the same time a symbol of recognition of his expertise in such field of duty as he passed the stringent requirements for being appointed to such office twice in his career by two different presidents. The zeal and commitment of Mister Galvez Junior toward achieving the lifelong dream of lasting peace in Mindanao have remarkably surfaced as he was once a great key player in the peace process, particularly between the government of the Philippines and other groups such as the Moro Islamic Federation Front. He additionally led the campaigns for the approval of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. Hence, it appears so reassuring that Mister Galvez would continue his mission to sustain the peace and the development of the Bangsa Moro region that he had once championed. In this regard Mister Speaker, it is therefore fitting and proper for the Bangsa Moro Parliament to express our heartfelt gratitude to President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior for appointing Mister Carlito Guanseng Galvez Junior as Chief of the OPAP PRO and congratulate as well the latter for his well-deserved reappointment. Hence this resolution. Thank you Mister Speaker.
Thank you Mister Speaker, the main document, the proposed resolution number three fifty eight, um, there being no Member of the Parliament who has signified intent to interpolate, I would like to make an omnibus motion to dispense with the periods of interpolation and debate and the period of amendment.
There is an omnibus motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate and the period of amendment, it is duly seconded, this motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, with, okay, Deputy Speaker Hassan wishes to speak. Deputy Speaker Hassan would.
Deputy Speaker Hatimil Hassan is recognized.
Ah, thank you Mister Speaker, ang ano ko lang, that's a period of amendment. I'd like to add, after OPAP PRO, formerly Office of the Presidential Advisor on the Peace Process, OPAP. Formerly Office of the Presidential Advisor on the Peace Process, OPAP. Ah, bakit po sigi pa rin sa amin ang pangalan? Dahil ang OPAP was organized by the late President Ramos when negotiated for the nineteen ninety six final peace agreement. The former name of the office was OPAMIN, Office of the Presidential, the President in Mindanao. Ang had known was Mister Paul Dominguez. But when we negotiated for the nineteen ninety final peace agreement, it was changed to OPAP, Office of the Presidential Advisor on the Peace Process. So in order to make it relevant, yung sa pag-usapnamin with the Philippine government, let's put the name OPAP after OPAP PRO. Ah, yun lang ang proptalko, Mister Chair, Mister Speaker, salamat.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, if I understand correctly Mister Speaker, ah, we just add formerly OPAP.
Yes.
Mister Speaker.
MP Nabiltan is recognized.
Ah, in addition or to seek to make more clarification, OPAMIN was not the, was not the office for runner of OPAP. It was the peace commission during the time of Al-Ran Bengson. OPAP was established during the time of Ramos after after Heidi Orak conducted several consultations in eighty-three or eighty-one provinces then. So, yun na po ang unang pangalan niya, after it transformed from the peace commission which held office at the Philippine Heart Center. OPAMIN was a separate ah, ah, agency of government to take charge of the proposed economic development for the whole of Mindanao. It was more of the economic arm which was then headed, correctly stated by the, by Secretary Paul Dominguez. Yun lang po, ah, just so maging straight ang record.
Ah, Mister Speaker, I stand corrected. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you Mister Speaker, I move that all members of the parliament who are present today be included as co-authors.
You can, there is a move to include all members of the parliament as co-authors, is seconded, the said motion is approved.
I move to approve simple resolu, ah, proposed resolution numbers three four one and three five eight, subject to style Mister.
There is a move to approve proposed resolution number three four one and three five eight, subject to style. It is duly seconded, this motion is approved.
Next Mister Speaker is proposed resolution number three forty-three. We would like to request that it be read together with proposed resolution numbers three five zero, three five one and three six zero, considering that they all speak of the same subject matter Mister Speaker. Three four three, three five zero, three five one and three six zero.
The Secretary General is so directed.
Proposed Resolution Number Three Hundred Forty Three entitled, Resolution Expressing Deepest Conduances and Sympathies to the Birive family of the Grand Mufti of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao Barm, Sheikh Abu Horayra A. Udasan, and Extending Profound Appreciation and Gratitude for his contributions to the Bangsa Moro cause and to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Author, Member of the Parliament, Baintan Ang Batuan. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Lysa Adamiya, Soharto Ang Buluto, Don Mustafa Luong, Rasul Ismail, Khalid Hajab Dawa, Japar Apollo Mikael Matalam, Basir Utu and Tawakal Mitimbang. Proposed Resolution Number Three Hundred Fifteen entitled, Resolution Honoring the Late Grand Mufti Sheikh Abu Horayra U. Udasan and Extending Deepest Conduances and Appreciation for his contributions to the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Authors, Members of the Parliament, Jamila Ramos, Abdolajisa Minudin, Ali Sangki and Michael Mitimbang. Co-authors, Members of the Parliament, Abdul Karim Miswarin, Susana Anayatin, Muhammad Kelli Antao, Pasit Abbas, Tawakal Mitimbang, Abdulwad Pak, Said Sheikh and Don Martin Kahalan. Proposed Resolution Number Three Five One entitled, Resolution Expressing Sympathy and Conduances to the Birive family of the late Grand Mufti of Barm Abu Horayra Abu Rahman Udasan and Commending His invaluable services to the Bangsa Moro. Author, Member of the Parliament, Susana Anayatin. Author, Member of Parliament, Susana Anayatin. Proposed resolution number 360 entitled, "Resolution Expressing Deepest Concordances and Sympathies to the Biried Family of Grand Mufti Sheikh Abu Hurairah Abdurrahman Udasan and Extending Profound Appreciation and Gratitude for his contributions to the Bangsamoro struggle and to the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region." Authors, Members of Parliament, Ahud Balawak Ibrahim, Abdawwag Gayak, Abdawwah Hasim, Abdawwah Makapaar, Abdawwah Hab Pak, Ayda Sinungan, Atmad Abbas, Ali Salik, Ali Sulaiman, Amrosi Makatanong, Anna Tarhat Abbasman, Bay Malaya Kandau, Bay Lehman Towel, Pasit Abbas, Benjamin Luong, Dan Asnawi, Edi Ali, Edward Gera, Harun Abbas, Jose Munius, Ibrahim Ali, Kadal Sinol Linding Jr., Lanang Ali Jr., Marjani Makasalong, Mary Ann Arnavo, Matarol Estino, Mahagir Iqbal, Muhammad Yakub, Mosber Aladun, Mujib Abu Pangalian Balindong, Riza Jajuri, Ramon Piyang Senior, Sid Salendab, Sid Sheikh, Siya Ilaih Adumama Alba, Soharto Ismail, Swab Oranon, Tawakal Mitimbang, and Ubaidah Pakasip.
Mister Speaker, I move to treat proposed resolution numbers 343, 350, 351, and 360 as simple resolutions, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to treat resolution as simple resolution, it is seconded, this motion is approved.
I move to consolidate the four resolutions, proposed resolutions, Mister Speaker.
There is a move to consolidate those. If you're seconded, this motion is approved.
May we recognize, Mister Speaker, MP Bay Intan Ampatuan as principal author of proposed resolution number 343.
The lady from Cotabato City, MP Bay Intan Ampatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala ubarakatuh. Um, Mister Speaker, considering that there are four similar resolutions and consolidated into one, Mister Speaker, I yield to the other sponsors to deliver their sponsorship speech. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, in that case, Mister Speaker, may we, may we recognize MP Abdullahziz Minudin on behalf, on behalf of MP Jamila Ramos to speak about proposed resolution number 350.
MP Abdullahziz is recognized. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahilladzi qualahi kitabil karim, alladina ida ashabat hom musila. Qalo innalillah wa innla ilaihi radion. Malugod ko pong binabati ang ating mga kasamahan sa parlamento. Ang ating Chief Minister, Ahud Ibrahim Balawak, Deputy Chief Minister, Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leader, at Deputy Floor Leaders, at iba pang mga officerlis ng BTA Parliament, mga panahonin, at mga tagasubaybay ng ating live session. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Tayo po ngayon ay nagluluxa sa pagpanahon ng ating minamahal na Bangsamoro Grand Mufti Sheikh Abu Hurairah Udasan Allayarhamu noong ika tatlo ng holiyo taon 2023 sa edad na itiwan taong gulang. Si Grand Mufti Udasan Allayarhamu ay isa sa mga haligi hindi lambo ng collective Bangsamoro struggle kundi ang ating Bangsamoro government bilang pinuno ng Bangsamoro darul ifta simula na may, na may tatag ang Bangsamoro Transcendental Authority noong 2019. Atin pong pinapahalaga ang kanyang mga accomplishments at naging contribution, kaya hayaan niyo po akong ibahagi ang ilan sa mga ito. Si Grand Mufti Udasan Allayarhamu ay nagtapos sa dalawa, ng dalawang Central Elementary School at sa Cotabato High School. Siya ay nagtapos din ng pag-aral sa Islam sa Madrasa Rashida. Ngayon ay Ma'ahad Alrahman. Sa maganoing ngayon ay Sharif Agwak mula 1958 hanggang 1964. At noong 1966, nagtapos siya ng pag-aral sa comparative religion, Christian Islam sa Jerusalem. At noong 1971, noong 1971 naman ay nagtapos siya sa Islamic University of Medina sa Saudi Arabia ng Bachelor's Degree on Da'ua at Islamic Usuludin, Theology in Islam. Mula 1971 hanggang 1972, maging, naging direktor siya sa Ma'ahad Alrahman niya. Sinimulan din niya ang gawain misilero sa ibang-ibang bahagi ng Mindanao mula 1974. Naging direktor din siya ng Islamic Da'ua para sa United Saba Islamic Association in Saba, Malaysia, sa loob ng fifteen years. Si Grand Mufti Udasan Allayarhamu ay isa sa mga co-founders ng Moro Islamic Liberation Front, Ima Elif, at malaki ang niambak niya dito sa pagtatap ng nasabing organization.